Virtual Town Hall, one quick housekeeping message. Have everybody please mute your microphones. And Mike Lanotti will give you direction later on and how to participate and share your dialogue. So, once again, welcome to the Region Eight Virtual Town Halls. Our expectation is that we would have been able to, the Executive Board, to travel around New York State and come to each region and meet with everybody and have this dialogue in person. And the pandemic has derailed us, right? But what we did do is we realized that this dialogue and this information was important enough that we were able to establish these virtual town halls. So, thank you to Mike Lanotti for making that happen and his staff always looking out for us and using technology to keep us connected. With regards to our professional staff, Mike Lanotti and his team has done a great job through this pandemic. And I'm sure that everybody here will agree that they communicated with us every day, multiple times a day, made sure that we were ahead of the curve when it came to the executive orders that came down from the Governor's Office. Mike made sure that we had a pipeline to the Governor's Office and his team to ensure that we were getting the most up-to-date information for our profession. And Mike and his team has protected us and protected our interests to ensure that we were going to be successful. And he does so to this day. So, Michael, thank you very much to you and your team. And without further ado, Mike Lanotti, our Executive Director.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for those kind words. And please know that, you know, I can speak for the staff when I say that we were just happy to do whatever we could, especially during this past spring, to help you continue to serve the families the way you are able to during the height of the pandemic. While I do have you on the line, just to give everyone a heads up, if you want to save the date, we are planning to do a COVID webinar update similar to the ones we did during the course of the year, just to kind of highlight what's still going on and what will be, we anticipate happening come the fall and the winter, some precautionary notes. So, more details will come, but again, that'll be November 5th. So, just to keep that in mind. Just a couple of additional housekeeping items. These are, these Town Halls are being recorded, just so you know. So, each of the Town Halls individually are being recorded when we're done this afternoon. We have one more after this. We will be putting them up on the website. So, you will have the opportunity to go and see what comments were made by your colleagues from other regions. And then anybody in the region who was unable to join us this morning will also have the ability to go and take a look and listen to the conversations that took place around the state. We also are scheduled for one hour, but we have no time constraints. So, we can go as short or as long as our conversation takes us. So, what I'd like to do is I'm going to share my screen. I have a quick PowerPoint. I just want to walk you through an overview to kind of frame our discussion for this morning. So, I'm going to share my screen with you. Just bear with me one second. Sorry about that, little technical difficulty. All right, great. All right, so before I go into the update or the overview, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our sponsors, who with their underwriting support, has helped us to conduct these Town Halls throughout the state. So, this morning, what I'll do first is go over just an overview of the two topics that we want to talk to you about today. Those topics are the paraprofessionals and alcohol in the funeral home. As I just mentioned, we'll do the overview, but the majority of our time will be spent for the, doing the discussion. The goal of our meetings are to obtain member feedback. This is our first real attempt at obtaining member feedback from across the state on these two issues. I mentioned earlier that they were being recorded and that each region is having its own Town Hall. The process that will follow is that, once we're concluded with all the Town Halls, the staff here will consolidate all the feedback that we've received and present that to the Board for them to have discussions at the December Board Meeting. It's also extremely important that everyone knows that we do not have any desired outcomes, no defined next steps or plans with regard to either of the two topics we are going to be discussing, and that the Association has taken no official position on either of them. It's also important to note that neither has, legislation has neither been drafted or researched at this point. I mention that because obviously we're talking about two items that would require a change in law. So, there is a more lengthy and detailed process that would have to take place. So, I just wanted you to know where we are in the process. So, let me give you what I'm calling more of a full overview of this issue. It really started back in 2015 with our first task force that was looking at these issues. That was the Funeral Service Education Task Force. The Funeral Service Education Task Force really didn't focus on specifically the issue of paraprofessionals. However, paraprofessionals is kind of a subgroup or a sub-issue within the larger issue of the funeral industry workforce, which was something that the Funeral Service Education Task Force began to look at for us in 2015. When they were formed, their goal, as you can see there, was to strengthen and elevate funeral service, both now and for the future. And they had several areas of focus that you can see there. Residency, education and curriculum in the mortuary science programs, continuing education and master certification. At the end of their two years of work, they presented several recommendations to the Association Board. With regard to residency, their recommendation was to add a discernment period and increase accountability and structure around the residency programs. As a side note, that also would require legislation. We are currently now at the point where we have drafted legislation that we are poised to introduce and are able to introduce into the state legislature during the next session. We have discussed this with all the stakeholders, including the mortuary science program directors and the Bureau. Education and curriculum recommendation was a new proposed curriculum for the mortuary science programs. And with regard to continuing education and master certification, their recommendation was a new mandatory credentialing program and higher quality CE program review and approval regimen. So, when the work of that task force was done, again, about a year after that, the President of the Association in 2018 formed the Funeral Service 2020 Task Force. That task force served for that President's term for that year, 2018 to 2019. And as you can see here, their goal was to explore and implement new programs to ensure a bright future for funeral service in New York State, similar to the goal of the Education Task Force. And in some respects, it was a continuation or extension of the work that was done by the Education Task Force. And in other ways, it was an expansion of the work that they had started. I like to say that they took a, the Funeral Service 2020 Task Force, took what I'm calling a more holistic view of the education or the workforce issue. You can see that when I say a continuation or expansion in the areas of focus they had, they had included residency and professional development in their areas of focus, two areas that clearly were discussed and looked at by the Education Task Force. They also, this task force looked at recruitment, mentors and paraprofessionals. Really, a holistic approach to the workforce issues, which is hopefully depicted by that circle graph you see there. They looked at the quality and quantity of the funeral service workforce, starting with what they called pre-students, which are potentially folks in high school who might have an interest in funeral service and how do we look at attracting them into funeral service? And then kind of going through what we'll call the life cycle of a funeral director, right through their retirement years. At the conclusion of their year of work, they made some recommendations and they actually made a recommendation in each of the five focus areas, but their recommendation was not as specific as taking a specific action. They said, "We believe that all of these areas need to be further explored." And they recommended using a combination of work groups, task forces and our bridge commission to address, to address the different areas. As it relates specifically to paraprofessionals, their recommendation was to create a task force to continue the work that they had started. However, when the Board looked at all the recommendations, while they accepted them and agreed with them, they felt it was important to get more member input first as the next step before forming any new work groups or task forces. And as Bill mentioned in his introduction, our goal was to do this in April during our regional meetings. But as we all know, COVID has disrupted a lot of what we've all intended to do. And as a result, we had to postpone or cancel those meetings and replace them with these Town Halls, where we're getting our feedback from you, our members. So, I'm going to look, dig into the paraprofessional work groups focus area a little bit more and discuss a little bit of what we asked them to do. So, really, let me start with this. The Funeral Service 2020 Task Force, in arriving at their recommendations, divided themselves up into work groups in each of the focus areas. Specifically with regard to looking at paraprofessionals and taking a deeper dive into that area, that happened through an exercise that I want to walk through you, walk you through now. What we did for that group is we presented them with an assumption scenario and asked them to answer a specific question. So, as you can see from the screen, that assumption scenario basically said, "Let's take a hypothetical and assume that the Estate Association had received notice from the State Department of Health that due to extremely low numbers of licensed funeral directors in New York, they had declared this a public health issue. Further assume that the Department of Health is proposing either a new license or certification be developed to address the workforce needs. And the needs are created due to a lack of current licensed funeral directors and a determination by the department that addressing this need through newly licensed funeral directors was not feasible." So, if that was a circumstance we were faced with, we asked this work group, "What would an ideal job description and responsibilities be to address this issue?" So, the work group in looking at that, the first question they asked themselves and how to answer was, really, the why and the what is what I'm calling it. So, let me say that a little differently. The question would be, based on this assumption scenario, why is there a lack of funeral directors? And what needs to be accounted for when creating these new position descriptions? And the answer that they came up with is listed here for you on this slide. The goal of these new positions and the things they want to address included, "To spark a career interest in funeral service, to create a pool of qualified funeral workers, to protect families by ensuring they're only working with vetted and certified professionals, to counteract that shortage in the mortuary science programs." That was the reason why they said we would not be able to deal with a shortage by having newly licensed funeral directors, "To also make sure that you're better serving family needs and responding to funerals being more involved and requiring more detailed work in areas such as event planning and similar services, to hopefully create an option for smaller funeral homes, who maybe for cost reasons were not able to hire a full-time licensed funeral director to help them, "To also support owners and managers by relieving front and back of house operations, "To supplement the availability of funeral service professionals, "To enhance the role of our licensed funeral directors "And to prevent burnout, really dealing with the work-life balance issues." So, once they had come up with this, this list of the, what we're trying to do and what, and how, why we're trying to do it, the next question was, "How are we going to do it?" So, that really came down to what positions should be looked at and consider to deal with this. So, they explored two positions, which you can see here are listed and dubbed, "The Certified Funeral Assistant" and "The Certified Funeral Arranger." I'd like to point out the importance of the word "explored" on this slide. And the reason that's important is I want to reinforce again, the task force did not recommend to the Association Board to move forward with either or both of these positions. Their recommendation was simply to find a, form a work group or a task force to continue the work that they had started. However, they spent a full year and spent a lot of time, thought and discussion in creating a framework for both of these positions. So, what I'd like to do now is share with you the framework they created for both of those to help us have a foundational point for our conversation as we go forward this morning. First, looking at the funeral assistant position. The intention behind this was to create a position akin to what's seen in the dental field or the legal profession. That's where that paraprofessional idea comes from. Dentists have dental hygienists, attorneys have paralegals. Also told that in the nursing profession, that the nursing profession has a very similar construct. So, as it, as it relates to this position more specifically, anybody who would be considered a funeral assistant would have to work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director, only be employed by one funeral home at a time. In terms of duties that they could perform, they would be able to sign out and transfer a deceased from place of death, assist a licensed funeral director with preparation, dressing and casketing. However, they would not be allowed to transport the decedent to the place of final disposition over the concerns you can see that are listed here. They would not be allowed to direct or supervise services, sign or amend death certificates, embalm or conduct arrangements. The arrangements are dealt with in the Certified Arranger position. So, this is an outline of the duties that were, responsibilities that this position would and would not be allowed to do. Again, part of the framework for discussion. With regard to the education and training requirements, the idea would be, in order to be certified, you go through a training program, potentially an eight to 12-hour program. At the end, you would have to pass a state-recognized exam. The certification that you get would come from the State Department of Health. And just like funeral directors, you'd have to recertify every two years and take continuing education credits. For example, you could have in this position four credits per biennium that the work group felt it was important that both OSHA and ethics would be required topics for anybody in this position to cover during their recertification biennium periods. Switching gears to the Certified Funeral Arranger position, similar to the assistant, you would have to work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director and only be employed by one funeral home at a time. In terms of responsibilities or duties to be performed, this individual or this person filling this role would be allowed to make arrangements, collect vital information, coordinate and schedule final disposition, arrange for the care, preparation and transportation of the decedent and discuss and sell merchandise and services. The, the signing contracts, signing and amending death certificates and bombing would all only be functions that could be performed by a licensed funeral director. With regard to education and training requirements, this one, again, similar certification training program, more lengthy because of the requirements of this position. A recommendation to include at least 25 hands-on arrangements under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director during that initial training program and going through an overview of the embalming process. Similar to the other position, you'd have to, at the end of that program, pass an exam. You would be certified by the state and recertified every two years. With regard to the number of credits and most of the topics to be covered in the continuing education component, that was to be determined, although they felt very strongly that ethics would need to be required of this, of this position. So, that was the framework that came, that the work group came away with during their time together. Obviously, some more work needs to be done in some of the areas you can see here. But again, I thought it was important to share that with you this morning. Right before that work group made their recommendation to the Board in June of 2019, they asked the Association to get them some initial member feedback. They thought that would be important. So, in May of 2019, we conducted a member survey. And what I'd like to do now is just go through some of the results that we received then, because I think it'll just be additional data points that'll help as we have our conversation. So, this first slide just shows you the number of answers we received. You can see 239, as well as the different group of individuals by position, I'll call it, who answered that. So, we had licensed funeral directors, owners and managers, a combination of those three. Also, note the 239, that the way we do our surveys, we send our surveys out to a link to our member firms. So, we have about 900 firm members each, 950 member firms each year. So, that represents about a 25% response rate. And if you follow survey polling, things of that nature, if you receive a 22% response rate or higher, then it's deemed a statistically valid survey. So, take that for what it's worth. If you do follow that, then we had 25%. So, you could rely on this as a representative sample of the feeling of our entire membership. So, let me just walk you through some of the questions and the answers that we received. So, first, we asked if our members were experiencing a shortage of qualified funeral directors available for hire. Can see here that just under 44% said yes, another 30-ish said no, and about a quarter, just it wasn't applicable to them, they really hadn't had a hire recently. We asked if they were concerned about the future workforce. And you can see here, a little more than three-quarters of those who responded said, "Yes, they were." About 13 said no, and 10-ish percent said they weren't sure, they hadn't thought about it. And you'll see in the next slides that coming, that there's that general 10 to 11% of folks who were just, really hadn't given any of these, this issue, a lot of thought. We asked them if they thought we should continue to explore the option of the licensed structure. You can see here, just about 50% said yes, another 40-ish percent said no, and there's that 10, 11% that weren't really sure. We had given our members much less detail than I just shared with you on the two positions, but kind of a summary of what the duties would be for each of these positions. And based upon just that kind of paragraph, we said, "Based on what we just shared with you, what do you think these positions are worth exploring?" So, first, we asked them about the Certified Funeral Assistant. You can see about 52% said yes, continue looking at it, another 37% said no, and there's that 11% that weren't sure. And we asked about the Arranger position, about 35% said yes, another 55%ish said no, and then that 10% who weren't sure. So, that's the information that we had gathered and all the work that had been done on the, on the paraprofessional positions or the Certified Arranger and Assistant. Before I open it up for discussion, just some information on the other topic we want to hear from you on today, which is alcohol in the funeral homes. We don't have the same level of information to share with you. There hasn't been that level of due diligence or work group, work done, task force work gone on this topic. However, again, because it deals with potential legislation and it'll take time to get to that point, we felt it would be a good opportunity to have a conversation and get a baseline feeling from our members now, about what they think about this topic. So, really, in terms of alcohol in the funeral home, this would be deemed an expansion or looked at as an expansion of the food and beverage law. This issue came up last December during our Governmental Affairs Committee meeting in the context of the idea that because the state law right now just flatly prohibits alcohol in funeral homes, that it's unfortunate because you can't have a champagne toast or a Bailey's toast or toast someone to their favorite beverage, whatever that might be. That's how that was brought up. So, no further action has been taken since that Governmental Affairs Committee meeting on the issue. But again, we thought it would be a good time to have a conversation and get our members' thoughts about whether they felt this issue was also one that we should continue to explore and put meat on the bones to, as we move forward into the last part of 2020 and into 2021. So, that's the information that I wanted to share with you to get a conversation going this morning. So, I will stop sharing my screen. I will also stop talking and I will open it up to comments, questions and feedback. So, just to give you all, we have a, we have a pretty good number of folks who are on the line with us this morning. We can do it a couple of ways. You can unmute yourself if you'd like to say something, as long as we're not having too many people try to speak at once. We can do it that way. You also have an option in the features to raise your hand and then a little blue hand comes up. I can see that, and then I can just kind of go around and let people know when it's their turn. And then the last option is you have a chat box. And if you'd like to type in a question, a comment, feedback, I will make sure that I read that to the group. So, those are the options that we have and we'll just kind of manage it as we go based on the number of folks who have information or feedback, questions, comments to share. So, with that, I will stop talking and open it up for our members to give us some feedback.
Hey, Mike, it's Tom from Bennett Funeral Home in Scarsdale.
Hi, Tom.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of the paraprofessional and, and the alcohol initiatives. I think, I think it's great for our industry, where obviously you see through the survey, we're heading in a different direction in regards to workforce. I, I think it's a plus. It's a win-win for everyone.
Thank you. And one thing I should have mentioned, I keep forgetting, and I don't know how I can forget, because it's, I know you guys lived it, especially downstate, more than anybody else in the country. Back in, when we were planning this, we decided we were going to have these conversations back in the fall of 2019. And as I mentioned, we were going to do it in the regional meetings in the spring of this year. Well, nobody anticipated the pandemic, obviously. And when we thought about having these conversations with you all, the idea of a paraprofessional or certified position was, was kind of really just a hypothetical and in the abstract. Well, as we all know, during the height of the pandemic, the Governor gave us that executive order authority to allow to have deputized agents. And I know that a lot of folks around the state, especially downstate, had the experience of using a deputized agent. So, as part of your comments and feedback, if you experienced, had experience doing that, we'd love to hear how that went, because I think that some aspects of, especially the Certified Assistant, is similar to what we saw with the deputized agent. So, just to give us that frame of reference, if anybody had a frontline or firsthand experience and you want to share how that went, that would be great.
This is Monica Clemente from Riverside Memorial Chapel. And I couldn't get to the computer fast enough to make up those letters for the people we were deputizing. They were such a help to us. We obviously had to choose the people that we were deputizing, because, you know, we, we all have different levels of, of staff for us and some of them we know were going to represent us very well. And some maybe, you know what, stay back and answer the phones and help us with other things. But it was a great, great help to us, most definitely.
Thank you. If you have a couple of, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's Marie Pemberton from Frederick Funeral Home. To end with Monica, you know, we were really swamped during our pandemic. And the paraprofessionals, we would have never had done it without them. We were able to share our information. They were able to create new ways and techniques that we follow here till today. So, we're really grateful. And for alcohol, absolutely, because most of our families, when we're catering and they decide whether they want it or not, they always ask, "Do you allow alcohol in the funeral homes?" So, I think that would be a great benefit to us as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mike. Mike, it's Doug from Schwartz Brothers. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, yeah, I mean, like a number of our locations, we were literally right at the center of this pandemic here in Forest Hills. And we did about 192 cases just in April. And the paraprofessional, the deputizing was, just as Monica said it, it was a godsend for us. It allowed us to respond to these families, to help these families when we would have been in a situation without that, where we definitely would not have been able to help the number of families that we were able to help during that time. So, that was huge. And I think going forward, it's like you're saying, it really can inspire people to get back in, to get into this business or retirees to get into it, when it's, you know, obviously our numbers are way down with people getting into the industry. As far as wine and beer, every family that we cater would love to have it. It keeps funeral services relevant, right, which is what it's all about. So, I completely support both these initiatives.
Thank you. I got a couple of options in the comments in the chat room. I just want to read those before we get to the next person, if I may. So, Lucy, Lucy Vistas types in, "Catering has been a success. Families many times during the arrangements have asked us regarding liquor. I think it's a wonderful way for people to come together, break bread and celebrate their loved ones with a heartfelt toast. I am in agreement for the liquor in funeral homes." Bruce Wayne, "What is the percentage of the polling numbers on the paraprofessional corporate to family-owned responses?" We don't, I don't have that available here right now. We'd have to go back and check to see if we have the responses by email or by name or if that was an optional feature to be able to track that back. So, I don't have that right here.
Mike, I'll just respond to that one. And then obviously, I've been participating with, with many of our Executive Board from Region One, which is the furthest west to where we are today. And, and specifically with regards to the Certified Funeral Assistant that would help with transport, I would say that the majority of the positive comments came from independent funeral homes.
Thank you. I don't know if Joe, if that was, were you, I'm not sure who was on, I cut off when I was doing the reading, so.
That's okay. I'm Joe from Higgins in New City. We did have the benefit of having a deputized director from Texas with us during the pandemic, and it made a world of difference. So, I'm all for the paraprofessional legislation. Also, in regards to the alcohol, I spoke to my, my staff yesterday and they're all on board with Boche initiative. So, we're ready to go in New City.
Thank you. Anyone else? I can't, I can't see everything on my screen at the same time, so please.
Hey, Mike, how are you? It's Kirk Thompson from Worson LaBella.
Hi, Kirk.
And I'm just going to co-tell on everyone else. I think these are just two great initiatives that we definitely need. Definitely be helpful, especially during the COVID times with all the guys that come down to volunteer for us. It was just totally amazing.
Thank you.
So, we're on board for that.
Thank you.
Mike, it's Patrick Kearns.
Hey, Patrick.
Hi. Um, I, the paraprofessionals were great, very helpful during the pandemic. I definitely see this running a business in the future. I would be open to paraprofessionals. I think, well, crazy to allow alcohol. Yes, families would love to have alcohol. And I can't say that families haven't snuck alcohol in, but to openly allow... But to openly allow it, I think we're all crazy. The increased liability, people leaving our buildings drunk, dealing with drunk patrons. We don't all need alcohol at all times. And I think it's for people to expect a drink when they come to a wake. It's not necessary. We haven't had it. We, I, I just, I, I think we'd be crazy to open ourselves up to that liability, to those issues. I have issues that is with drunken patrons. I'm trying to limit the drinking because they're sneaking it into my parking lot. The, the tailgating that, that'll happen that I, to, to condone it, I, I think, I think would be crazy. That's all I'll say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey Mike, this is Mike at Whelan and Wolf Funeral Home in Yonkers.
Hello.
Hi. I strongly support both, both of the, the options. During the pandemic, we did three times the amount of funerals that we normally do. And without these paraprofessionals that helped us out, we could have never done it, never done it. So I strongly agree with that. And as far as the beer and wine at catering, every time I offer catering to a family, they ask, well, what about alcohol? What about beer, wine, whatever? And, and I've lost many catering events because we don't offer it. So I strongly suggest both.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, this is Vincent from Riverside in Mount Vernon. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Thanks. I too am on board. I think both initiatives are, are great. It will allow us great growth for our, our business in both, both ends and staffing and with the reception that we could offer. So I'm, I'm on board with both also.
Thank you.
Mike, John Dariano. Sherry first.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi. So Mike, you know me, I'm not, I'm not afraid of saying what I think and I'm against paraprofessionals. I was also, you know me, I, we were in touch during, during our apex. I was both here in New York City and in New Jersey and I saw both. And in New Jersey, they have removal techs. And so what I found was that being a funeral director who knows everything from the beginning to the end, from the moment you get that phone call, I know what, what it takes to go and pick up a decedent from a home or a hospital or what. And then I understand that from that point, then what, what entails to make that arrangement and have to interface with the hospital, have to interface with the cemeteries, with everyone else that's involved with having to take care of a funeral or just a regular burial or regular cremation. Though that knowledge that I had, being a funeral director who knew, who was licensed to know everything from beginning to end was, was imperative for the families. Okay, we have to look at the, the perspective that the families have. The families need to understand, and they do understand, once they're going through it, that as one professional, I'm taking care of everything from beginning to end. And that I understand that the timeline from when I pick up your loved one until they're going to be either cremated or buried, that's the timeline. Whereas in New York, I'm sorry, New Jersey, when I had paraprofessionals come and help, because in New Jersey as well, they, you know, but these were people who, who, you know, were not licensed, who only knew a certain aspect of, of the, of the business. Now, all of my colleagues who had paraprofessionals come in into New York State, you have to understand, everyone needs to understand, those were licensed people. Those are people who were in the business who knew what they were doing. Going back to New Jersey and removal techs, these are people who, God bless them, but they don't have the education, the experience under their belts to understand what goes from beginning to end and how to explain that to families who are like, why is it taking two hours to pick up my loved one? Why is it taking longer than necessary, what they expect necessary? You know, because I need to explain to them, I need to interface with the local municipality, with the hospital, with blah, 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 blah. A paraprofessional only understands one segment, one specialized segment of their job. We as licensed professionals for one, we know everything, we know everything. And that gives comfort to our consumers, to our families, that we know everything, we do everything. And that we are in touch with everyone and everything. Now, I understand if you're saying that you're as a licensed professional, these people are under a belt, that's great. But also during the, during our apex, I saw a lot, especially in the Jewish community, I saw a lot of, you know, just abuse of these paraprofessionals. You know, people who are just going and doing and families don't know what they don't know. Okay? An informed consumer, if they can inform themselves and educate themselves before the time of death, then fine. But most of these people don't know what they don't know. And I see abuse. I see a lot of confusion for consumers. And I, I think that just makes us look worse in the funeral profession. We're trying our best to keep it, you know, ethical and high end. But then you bring in paraprofessionals who, yes, you're going to educate them, but they're not going to know the entire spectrum of what it is that we do and that goes into taking care of cremation and burying a body. Then your consumers are just going to look at us even with less respect, in my opinion. And that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Oh, for alcohol. I, you know, I, you know, at first everyone was like, oh my God, we can't have catering in New York State. And now that it came in New Jersey also, you know, oh my God, blah, blah, blah. It went really, really well. I, I hear what Patrick is saying, you know, and that was one of the concerns when, when we were first looking at legislation to bring in food into the funeral home, to New York State, the mess and the nitty gritty problems. But we all, we, we jumped in and we did really well. A lot of us made really good money. And I think it's just an additional, you know, service to our families, to our consumers, which ultimately that's what we're doing this for. We want our consumers to look at us with respect. We want our consumers to look at us with trust because they're entrusting us with the most precious thing that they can. And we want to give them something that five years from now, when they lie in bed, they say, I did right by my loved one. So I see nothing wrong with, with alcohol, but I think we'll do fine with it.
Thank you. John?
Good morning, everyone. I've sat in on these meetings all week. In regards to paraprofessionals, I'm a small independent funeral home. I needed the help. I found the paraprofessional to be a very, very important tool. If used correctly, it's in addition to our industry. In regards to liquor, I keep hearing everyone worried about drunken, drunken clients and people being inebriated. We're not talking about making our funeral homes bars. We're talking about offering family services that they're looking for. We control the decorum of our funeral home. Everyone else does. If you're going to turn your place into a bar, don't offer liquor. Family wants to have a simple goodbye toast to a loved one? It adds value to the funeral. That's my fifty cents.
Thank you, John.
Mike, I just want to add some, some information that's important so we can kind of, you know, you know, draw out some, some good, some meaningful dialogue. So catering, food in the funeral home is acceptable and it is permitted in forty-nine of the fifty states. Alcohol in the funeral home consumption is available in forty-six of the fifty states. Of the forty-six states, you have funeral homes that are allowed to have it by specific legislation or a funeral home is able to provide application and make licensing, application to get a license to serve that, that alcohol in the funeral home. And again, so what we're not looking to do is, is, is open up a bar, right? But we're looking to just enhance that food and beverage to have a bottle of wine, bottle of beer, bottle of champagne. Definitely not looking to open up a bar. This is to enhance that current food and beverage law that, that we have seen be successful. Thank you.
I do have a couple of additional chat room comments, just to let the group know. Daniel Sturgis, both initiatives would be a great benefit for our chapels. I think everyone at Joseph G Duffy supports both initiatives. Eileen Lister, we had benefit of help during pandemic and with employees retiring over the next few years, this seems like this would be a beneficial replacement for our location. And then Mark, removal assistant for an upstate funeral director is something we should look at. Downstate and in populated areas, it is a mistake. It will weaken our license. So those are the additional comments since I left. And then one more. Dick Grayson, I believe that paraprofessional is a terrible idea. Granted, it helps during a pandemic. But during non-epidemic times, it will only help the bottom feeders in the industry. If allowed, there will be more $1,000 direct cremation businesses operating with one funeral director supported by a team of minimum wage employees. This will destroy the industry as we know it. That is everything in the, from the chat box. So.
If I can add to that, Mike, it's Sherry.
Yep.
With pay, that's the other thing, okay, is that we are thankfully up in the Northeast where some of the highest paced paid funeral directors compared to other funeral directors in the United States. But we're still not paid enough. So you go ahead and you break up our license, that just gives, you know, that, again, that waters down, like my colleagues say, that waters down our license. Okay, we, you know, I am a licensed professional in two different states. I know exactly what I'm doing and I deserve to be paid properly. And all of my colleagues who are fantastic at what they do, who are living paycheck to paycheck, you know, that's just going to make it worse for them. So you're going to have even, even less people going to school doing, you know, our, you know, our holy profession because you're not being paid well, okay? And the burnout is very high. I think we need to look at a different way and, you know, or maybe just keep hitting that whole educational thing. You know, I, for many years have gone to different yeshivas and talked about, you know, high school yeshivas and talked about how great it is to go into our profession. And, you know, I've had two kids already go and start looking into it, you know, who are high school kids. My daughter's going into it. You know, I think we just need to keep hitting that. Because if we're looking at the long term, paraprofessionals are just going to water us down, make us get paid less and give us less respect from the consumer.
Yeah.
Mike, this is Farrell Burger. Can I weigh in?
Hello.
Hi, I'm from Casey McCallum Rice Funeral Home in Staten Island, New York. Mike, I'm going to talk from a, a different perspective than I think a lot of people here on this call can. I started out as a resident in the trade in New York City. Then I went upstate for five years. I worked in a private family owned funeral home in a very remote part of upstate New York. And then I came back to New York City and I worked for, you know, I'm an SCI funeral home. So I, I like to think that I have a very interesting perspective of every aspect that people can be looking at the paraprofessional from. From the, the argument that it devalues our license, I don't really buy into that because of the reason that they have to have oversight from licensed individuals. So I look at it kind of like being a Hertz driver or a receptionist. You're still under the direct supervision. And if you add the credentials that they have to have some sort of accreditation and CEUs under our supervision, there's no reason that it can't be done correctly. And to the concerns of the people that, you know, the bulk discount funeral homes are going to abuse it. It's like everything else. There's going to be somebody who tries to abuse the law. But if it's done correctly, it gives us oversight to be able to curtail some of that. And I think for those of the funeral directors in upstate New York, you know, to make a removal fifty miles away and then you have to go do another one forty miles away. In that regard, that makes it a huge relief that you can have somebody who's, for the lack of a better description, kind of deputized to act, you know, in a legal capacity to be able to help you with that. I think that that's huge. So I would support the paraprofessional in that regard a hundred percent. And as far as alcohol goes, people who are going to drink to excess are going to drink to excess. You know, as funeral professionals, you know, the bottom line in funeral homes, you know, although we're providing a very important service to the family, it's about making money and bars make money. And if they can make money, restaurants can make money off alcohol. Let's be honest, that's the reason we're looking to do it because it's a moneymaker. And if it can be done legally and, and a way to honor individuals and help family honor their loved one, it's crazy not to get involved with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a, one more chat box comment from Jeff Holcomb, who says, I support, I support both proposals. So thank you, Jeff, for typing that in.
Mike, I just want to take you back on one of the calls. Seven of the regional calls, so I have to say that.
Bob, your microphone's like kind of going in and out right now. It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, Mike. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Yeah. I was going to say, the regional verticals so far. Many of the firms, especially up in the, the rural areas of the north, you know, definitely feel the need to possibly, you know, this would be a big help to them as far as the lack of licensees that are out there and, you know, the wherewithal to be able to perform the license help. So they, they really feel the need to move forward in this direction, at least to support, you know, support the paraprofessionals.
I got most of that. I'm sorry. It was like you were just breaking up just a little bit, but that's okay. Anyone else? Any additional comments, feedback, questions?
Hey Mike, Bill O'Brien. Nice to see you. I'll repeat just for the benefit of this group, brief and sincere thank you for your great support during the course of the year. So we, we have a, we have an interesting perspective because of the fifteen hundred properties we own across the United States. I've managed many of them. It's very clear to me that having somebody who is well-picked, well-trained to go out and assist with removal is an enormous benefit to us. And particularly in those more rural areas, as was discussed. To contemplate selecting somebody who is substandard, who won't listen to training, who will do things in a way that is inconsistent with our values is a choice that each location, each funeral home would have to make. I know the choice that we would make. I know the quality of the people that we would choose, the way they would go out. And we would, we'd be sure to manage that very, very carefully. Beautiful thing about both of these initiatives is that each funeral home gets to choose whether they embrace it or not. And those who choose to embrace it, take full responsibility for doing it in a way that's very consistent with the values that that location holds. I disagree with the devaluing. We also have seen many funerals that have had a celebration of life with a glass of champagne, being able to serve wine to the guests. And it really does, it changes the environment for those who come in. If it is their culture to have a sip of wine or a sip of beer when they come together as family and friends, it allows them to be who they actually are as a family, as a community of friends. And to celebrate the life of the person rather than sneaking away after the funeral and going to find a place for us to be able to provide that to them is, is really very valuable. As many of the folks on the call know, it was a real gift to me to be able to toast my father with a glass of champagne four and a half years ago. I'll always remember it. Many comments about it. So I really commend, I commend the effort that you all are putting into both of these initiatives. And I also commend the group that did the study because they recognized that the, the funeral professionals throughout the state of New York, which by the way, are some of the best I've ever seen. I've been, I've seen a lot of states. And this group of professionals is really quite, quite wonderful. But to listen to them and to not attempt to have the, the paraprofessional who could do almost everything except for embalming, which is the typical second license in other states. And to listen very closely and to modify that in a way that's more acceptable to the professionals of New York State, I think was a very good move. And so I, I commend, I commend that effort quite a bit. And so we, we support it and I appreciate the many, many comments that I've heard today. And thanks for the time, Mike. We really appreciate the ability to get together this way.
Sure, thank you. Don't see any other comments in the chat box. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? There's one, one, oops, sorry, one just came in. Laura Macho, good morning. I'm sorry. And by the way, if I butcher anybody's last name, I apologize. And I should know better because my last name gets butchered all the time too. So. So I should have said that in the beginning before I started butchering everybody's last name. Good morning. I'm in favor of both the paraprofessional and alcohol in the funeral home. If paraprofessionals are trained by a distinguished team like the ones attending this meeting, they will learn the correct and ethical way to care for the families we are honored to serve. As far as alcohol in the funeral home, most families do request this service when catering is mentioned. Why not offer them something that will be meaningful to enhance their experience with us? Why not offer them something that will be meaningful to enhance their experience with us? Thank you. And Jeff Holcomb added in another comment. Will there be any education requirement for the para before they can apply for a position? That had not been discussed at this point, Jeff. The idea was that the training program that's created, I think, and I don't want to speak for the group of being part of the meetings. The idea was that whatever would be needed to provide the education and training to perform the functions that would be permitted at the end of the day would be provided through that training program, regardless of how many hours or how long it took and with the exam. So there wouldn't be like you need a an associate's degree or a high school, you know, nothing, no pre. That was discussed anyway at this point. I don't know if that answers your question. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. See, I have one more. John Rana Z Z Z is Z. My God, and that's an Italian name. I should know how to pronounce this one. So I'll call him John R. Just because I'm going to butcher it really badly. If everyone were required to let a family know we're sending a certified assistant to pick up their loved one instead of a licensed funeral director, would everyone still be on board? Or requiring telling a family they can come in and meet with our certified arranger instead of a licensed funeral director? So some questions from John to the group just kind of spark whether there's a that's been considered, I guess, the best way I can say it.
I guess I guess one thing to put it into perspective, to have this this certified funeral assistant that would be able to help with transfer remains when needed. And when we think about a paraprofessional position and how it applies to other professions, I I can't help but think that a paralegal does not devalue the attorney's degree or ability to serve, be admitted to a bar and 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 go to court, right? A paramedic does not take the place of a doctor. In in fact, in in both instances, it's actually elevated the the position. I'm sure we could all agree when you go to a doctor's office for a meeting for for an appointment, the first person you see is not the doctor. Someone else is taking your temperature and weighing you. Sometimes the weight's a little too high, a little levity there. And and then you get the opportunity to see the doctor, the specialist, the person who has the degree, who's going to be able to help you specifically. So that's how I kind of see that. And and just so we all know, I I'm usually, and Mike will tell you and Bobby and John, that I'm much quieter during the other regional meetings. This happens to be my region, so I feel empowered to to speak when when so moved.
I have a couple of other comments. Sean Anderson, I certainly support both of these initiatives. And Eileen Listah asked a question, can a removal person also become a certified arranger? Again, that was not a specific question that was answered. But there was never, I don't think there was any discussion about limiting someone to only one or the other because there would be two distinct sets of requirements, both education, training and the certify certification process. So but that would obviously have to be something we would flesh out as we move forward. But at this point, there was no explicit requirement that you only could be one or the other. That was discussed.
Hi, this is Jennifer Lee.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Lee's Funeral Home in White Plains. For the paraprofessionals, I'm a little mixed on that one. I understand kind of the need that we're coming to in this time with less licensees. And given what happened during the pandemic. However, there are already abuses that exist when we don't even have paraprofessionals. And the amount of people who perpetrate as though they're funeral directors when there's only a funeral director license that exists. I can only imagine what's going to happen when there's the lower qualifications and people are going to be trying to get away with whatever. There's not the oversight that exists from on the state level. There's not inspectors like there used to be. So everything is really reliant on the individual firms. And yes, the firms that are good and train people well and have good ethics and oversight will do well with it. But the funeral homes, and we all know that there are many exist. And if you're not familiar with them or aware of them, lucky you. But there are many bad ones out there and there are many unethical people who are already doing this, basically. And so the amount of abuse that's going to exist and and won't be able to be to be curtailed, I I just, that's scary. On the alcohol part, I'm not in favor of that. I, like some, including Patrick, had mentioned, you know, when you see the other side, when you've seen the other side and how it can be abused, it's not a good thing. I think it's more so a money making thing. And yes, we are for profit businesses. But when you talk about, oh, caring for the families and all that, you don't have to have alcohol to make something meaningful. And on the flip side, funerals are meant to be family affairs where there are people of all different ages. So people who are not allowed to partake when you have young people there, when you have to get into carding, that excludes them. Not to mention thinking about people who have substance abuse issues. And so right now, when you're grieving and you go to a funeral, at least if you're tempted to drink and grief is something that stirs it up for you, you know, you can go to the funeral home and grieve and attend this funeral and be around people. And at least when you go to the funeral home, you don't have to worry about being tempted by alcohol or having it pushed in your face. If you don't want to go to a repass, you don't have to. But now the funeral home won't even be a safe place. And right now, there's a difference between funeral homes and bars and stuff like that. We don't have liquor licenses. We can't do alcohol. So in places like, you know, hotels or bars and things like that, there's a difference. Once we are able to do all that, then again, you know, I know this has come up before, but it already, they're already infringing what prevents, okay, well, funeral homes are doing alcohol. Then, you know, we're going to market this more so on our side. And then, you know, they're they'll profit from it, too. With the, we don't know how long the restrictions are going to exist because of COVID with the smaller amounts of people. With the smaller amounts of people anyway, is alcohol that necessary? Do you want extra ways that people are letting down their guard, being more vulnerable, et cetera? People are in their house already, probably drinking and doing things. Do they need somewhere else that they have to go or they can just go back home and do it? Alcohol used to exist in the funeral homes years ago. That's why part of it became that it's not. You know, my parents were from a time when there was alcohol in the funeral homes and it did not work and they were happy that it was outlawed. So that I'm not in the favor of.
Thank you.
Mike, I Mike, I have a question. If we were to allow alcohol, are you saying I could sell the alcohol? Like talking about as a money making, as part of your revenue stream, how does everyone foresee alcohol helping their revenue stream?
I'll I'll defer. I mean, the idea was to include it along, like again, it's it is an extension or expansion of food and beverage, which I believe is a profitable aspect to what is offered to families from the funeral home perspective. But I am not a funeral director, so I will I will defer to your colleagues on the line and to answer that more specifically.
Right, yeah. I mean, because my understanding of the food and food law is I can't create Leo F. Kern's catering and be the beginning and, you know, in a sense, being the moneymaker from catering. I can allow a family to choose a caterer and bring that in. And then I guess I can charge for the use of my room or I could mark up the caterer's fee and tack on a percentage for myself there. So, right, that I'm correct and that's how I can make money on on food and beverage?
Again, I'll defer to your colleagues who have the firsthand experience and have done it before I I don't want to say the word.
I mean, I I allow I allow food and beverage in my funeral home. I do it as an added benefit. I, you know, I let people, I don't make any additional revenue from it other than a way of offering something that maybe a family will choose to use my services because I will allow them to set up some light refreshments, you know? I I just, I'm just curious, seriously, of how people foresee really making money off of allowing food, beverage, alcohol. How do they foresee revenue there?
Someone like to answer that?
I'll jump in on that, Mike. So what we, what the way we look at that is when we offer the family the service of providing well vetted catering groups or licensed people who have a license to serve alcohol. And we've done all the work to figure out who does a good job, who will come and serve well, who arrives on time with good good fare and and the kinds of things that the family wants and put the effort in.
Sure.
We believe that there's some value to that. And so what we will do is we'll say that if a family comes in and they want to you'll have catering that, let's say it costs a thousand dollars, there is an arrangement that we have with the organization that provides that food. But they say to us, well, you know, because you've done all the work getting the the arrangement with the family, we'll provide you with some discount and we will certainly will offer a bit of a markup for the use of the for the use of the space and all of that. And so it's a great service to the family because they don't have to worry about it. They they pick the menu while they're doing the arrangement. They come in and we do the same thing with the offering of the beer and wine. And our experience is that when the families don't have to do that, they don't have to clean up. They don't have to cook. They don't have to talk to their friends about bringing the crock pot.
Oh, sure.
It works out great. So we do pretty well with it.
So now who takes on the added liability and responsibility of drunk patrons, underage drinking and driving home drunk?
Yeah, the people who come in have the license.
Underage and drunk and drunk driving.
The people who come in have the license. We you you would never pour a glass of wine. You would never hand somebody a bottle of beer. The person who's doing that is has the state license to serve alcohol. They are hired by you to come into your to your facility in order to provide that service to the families that that you're serving. And they carry all of that liability. When we have catering events, we go through a very long process of making sure that they have proper insurance to cover all of those things. And and those people who have the license, just like we value our license or you all value your licenses as funeral directors, the people who have a license to serve alcohol are equally proud of the fact that they're well trained to to be responsible in that effort. I don't equate the two licenses. I'm not attempting to do that. I'm just saying that they are licensed by the state to do that. And they carry the insurance and the liability. The funeral home passes all of that on to the group that they are hiring to do that service for the family.
We have a couple of other comments in the chat room. There were a couple of comments when Jennifer Lee was speaking. Sherry said, and Point brought up Casey St. Vow said, I agree with Ms. Lee. We also had a question about whether we would have, you would have to obtain a liquor license from the state liquor authority. I think Bill just explained the circumstance where you wouldn't have to. I know when we were doing the food and beverage regulations as as because of the limitations, especially on not how being able to serve hot food or anything along those lines, that was the that created the ability for the funeral homes not to be over have oversight as a food establishment, which would have required all of the extra oversight and regulations as a restaurant, so to speak. So that was part of that. Laura also added that the catering vendor will also provide provide insurance similar to what Bill O'Brien was stating. And then Mark writes, God forbid, something happens on the way out of the funeral home. Everybody gets sued, including the funeral home. John R. in the court of public opinion, when the newspaper says Mr. Smith drove home drunk from XYZ funeral home and killed two people, it won't really matter who's legally liable.
Michael, just comment that with 1,500 funeral homes and probably 1,300 of them serving alcohol, we've never had that problem, not a single time.
Thank you.
And and we've been doing it for quite a few years.
Patrick, it's Sherry. You know, you were asking how how do you make money? You can raise your venue fee. You can.
Oh, no, I, yeah, and Sherry, I I don't want to get into too much because it's anti, it's we can't discuss charges in a group like this. I I I understand. I understand that. I was more looking at of specifically what the increased, whether you really think that increased revenue stream of serving food and of alcohol is worth it. And I just, I I don't, I don't, I don't see it as as worth the additional revenue that you're going to make on that small amount of food and alcohol, on the small amount of alcohol, the additional revenue as as worth the liability and the headaches involved. The my family who's been in this business a long time and and lived under alcohol and smoking before thinks the greatest thing that ever happened was getting rid of alcohol and smoking and funerals. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't worth it. I I'd rather provide funerals and sell caskets and and services and and stay out of out of the catering business, especially the alcohol side of it.
That's interesting, an interesting perspective. Mike, what are we seeing from the other regions, particularly upstate? What are their, what's their opinion on alcohol? Because they're smaller independents.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gone into the list to see who in terms of who logged on, whether, you know, they were, what type of ownership structure it was or case volume or anything along those lines. You know, there were, there were split in comments, quite frankly, similar to this. There were some places where there really wasn't much said. I I in facilitating haven't really, unfortunately, I guess I haven't really paid attention to the percentage of pro versus con or comments. Maybe someone, one of the other officers who's been on the other calls can address that in terms of the split that they might have. Definitely comments mostly on both sides. I think there's been a lot more feedback on the paraprofessional, probably just because there's more details that we have that we presented. But definitely, there's definitely been a split. I just don't know what the percentage split is. Again, I would defer to any of the officers who might feel more comfortable doing that. Oh, no, Bob, yeah, try again. Maybe get closer. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry if my microphone's not working on the computer.
That's better, much better now.
I I think what I remember from the regional meetings, it seemed that the funeral homes that were offering receptions and catering receptive to the to the alcohol. The other folks, I didn't have much of an opinion or positive because, again, they weren't offering the the hospitality or catering at the funeral home. That's my recollection of the of the other the other meetings.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I want to, one thing I want to say is I, this is my region, so I guess I'm biased. But I had been on seven other calls and some of the calls we've been on, we were almost begging for some dialogue. So I'm proud of this group, you know, that just that we're having a lot of feedback, a lot of dialogue. And this is what we've really been looking for.
I would agree with that. This is definitely the most discussion we've had, which is great.
Mike, if I can get in. When I started, I'm I'm one of the old timers now. I I'm licensed over close to 40 years now. When I started, it was a three day wake. It was a flower car, four or five limousines. I don't think that we need to worry about the revenue stream that alcohol is going to bring in. I think we have to worry about the additional service and the additional use of our buildings. I mean, I'm a small Italian funeral home in an Italian community. Every Saturday, or at least three Saturdays a month, I'm doing memorial services. If I can enhance a memorial service by offering a small toast at the end of the service for the people to say goodbye and I get value out of my funeral home, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking at the hundred or $200 I'm putting in the bottom line. If I have to do that, I can close the building. I don't need to keep the building open. I don't have to worry about making that type of a margin. Give the people what they want. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. We have another chat box comment from Kirk Thompson. Because of the concern with people getting out of hand with alcohol, maybe it can be limited to a two drink max, just like catering, we cannot have hot food. I think this is great to have the opportunity to offer it if asked. Kirk, yes, that actually, there were a couple of comments. Kirk, yes, that actually, uh, there were a couple of comments, um, and some of the other town halls about how that would be served or offered. Somebody else had said, you know, you can put it on um, as part of the package and it's, you know, you have uh, 30 minutes worth or a drink, or there were other discussions about crafting it in a limited way to um, allow it as an added benefit without some of the, maybe addressing some of the concerns that some folks had about it getting uh, too out of hand. Again, that was um, obviously just something that was, it has been discussed. And these kind of comments are great because this gives, if we do go forward and have more discussions based on the feedback, this will be the kind of things that we can have whoever we form as a group to try to answer some of these questions and come up with options. Um, John R. again, uh, asked, who is going to keep track of that, um, the two-drink max and minimums? Again, that would um, or kind of early on to figure out all the details behind the operational aspects. That would probably, if there was going to be some restrictions, I'm guessing it would be mostly in either regulation or uh, in some type of uh, opinion letter or a letter to the industry. That would explain what some of those things would be, but uh, that's probably near the end of any process that we were going through. So we don't have answers for that at this point. Um, Amanda uh, Boudreau. Hello, everyone, I believe that there are great benefits to a funeral, to the funeral home and to the families to allow alcohol in the funeral homes. I also feel that having a paraprofessional would be a game changer for the industry and can help make the business more modern and relevant. The alcohol perspective can be a driving factor to have the new generation stay with the funeral homes their families always utilized. Uh, and she is from Walter B. Cook Funeral Home.
Mike, it's Sherry.
Want to share one, one, uh, some more information uh, to help people start to think a little bit about the paraprofessional. So what we do know, and, and, and again, uh, in my, in my president's message this, this month, which I want everybody to read, uh, shows that the, you know, Mike's information that he has brought out of, uh, that is first slide, talks about how this process began back in 2015, right? So 2015, you imagine how many hundreds of hours were spent on drawing out all of this information. We actually hired a facilitator uh, who, uh, who worked with our team to help make sure that we kept on track and that we were provided the very best information. And what we did see is that there was a decline in uh, the amount of people going into the funeral profession. A decline in the amount of people that are going to mortuary science programs. And guess what? New York State is part of that. I think it was in Region Two, uh, there was a gentleman, I forgot his name. He did make mention, and Mike has spoken about this in the past. While there were 44 uh, people uh, in the mortuary science program, they only graduated six. And what we're seeing is that even with colleges like Hudson Valley, uh, you know, the, the program is not streamlined. It's not uh, in, in a, it's not created in a way where if the, if the student succeeds, they automatically go into that next step. Just sometimes there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect. So this is a way where we can, this paraprofessional, uh, maybe help our professional along uh, to have quality people uh, work alongside us that maybe you're not looking to become and invest that time or the money uh, to become an actual funeral director. Thank you.
So let me ask a question, Mike, it's Sherry. So let's say, um, after all of our regional meetings, um, we come up with uh, an answer. What's the next step? Is the, are we the board going to get back together and come up with, Randy, to make a legislation for it or against it? What's, what are the next steps?
So right now, the plan is for, to consolidate all the feedback presented to the board. Uh, the recommendation that was presented to the board back in June on all of these topics was to take the next step, which was form another work group or task force to continue the work done. So what I showed you was really intended to be a framework to build off of or work off of for next steps. My, if you're asking me personally and what I, I feel, do I feel that we are in a spot right now where we have gone through all the processes and checked all the boxes to introduce legislation on either of these? No, I mean, it took us two years after, or three years after the education task force work was done. Um, and then the, the 2020 task force looked at it again to get to the point where we have legislation on the residency piece now. So um, I think that there, you know, the question that we're asking really is we're trying to determine from our members if there's enough of an interest on either or both of these issues to continue exploring them. We need to, we have not even gotten to the point where we would have an official, we haven't had an official vote from our members, you know? My position has always been that our job is we here work for our members. And if we're going to go ahead to the legislature and ask for a change in law, you know, it's very important for me, I believe, and for us, to have a majority, a vast majority of our members in support of a position before we go out and ask for a change in law. So we still need to do that due diligence. This was just step one and hey, if we want to look at this, I don't, I don't, I don't think the board wants, and I don't want to speak for the board, but if, you know, 90% of the people said, don't move forward, this, we don't like the idea, for us to keep working on it is a misuse of resources. If, you know, 50, 60, 70% say both of these are great, or, you know, we should be, or we like the idea, you should keep exploring them, then we need to keep working on it and come back with more details and present that to the membership again to make sure that by the time we get to the, to the point of moving forward with something, if we decide to do that, we know that we have the support of everyone and, and this is something that folks will uh, generally support if we were going to go forward. So, so that's a very long answer. The short answer is no, I don't believe we're ready for, the next step is not drafting legislation. The next step is forming a task force or a work group to continue to, to continue to explore either or both of these topics and come back with further recommendations.
Thanks, Mike.
Other, um, one other question from John. Can a paraprofessional work as a certified something while attending mortuary school to get a full license? Actually, the, the answer to that is while you're doing both, um, I, I don't know about that. I don't, I guess in the first blush, I don't see why you couldn't. One of the things that has been brought up, and that was actually brought up by the work group that looked at this issue on the paraprofessionals, was this was hopefully seen as um, allowing some people who might not be sure if they want to be a funeral director to get that type of experience in working in a funeral home and performing some duties. And then if they like what they're doing and they want to take the next step, to hopefully allow them to then go and become a fully licensed funeral director. So the goal was kind of always to not just help the workforce issue, but to help create that uh, feeder system, if you will, to get people into the schools and graduate and become fully licensed funeral directors. So uh, maybe a stepping stone, something along those lines. So that was part of the concept. Uh, as to the, doing it simultaneously, it hadn't been brought up specifically. Um, but I do know, you know, being an attorney, I do know paralegals who, you know, they're working as a paralegal at a law firm and then they go to law school at the same time and then become an attorney if that's the, what they want to do full-time. So uh, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be an option if that's something somebody wanted to do. But um, that's just my own, from my own personal standpoint. Any other questions, comments, feedback? It's been a really uh, very, it's been the, the most conversation we've had and back and forth. A great, a great uh, number, oh, John Golden, I see. John, you have your hand raised, so uh, oh, and you put it in the, okay. You actually put it in the chat box. Um, John says, hi all, I am against both paraprofessionals and alcohol in the funeral homes. That was John Golden. Uh, as I was saying, this has been a great conversation, a lot of participation. Uh, one of the larger groups that we've had gathered, which is phenomenal because I, as I mentioned in the beginning, the goal of these exercise, these town halls is really to hear from you. Um, so I know this has been said before, but I just want to reiterate, I think Bob Hogan had said it. I very much appreciate all the feedback uh, and the comments that have been brought forth this morning. Um, I don't want to cut us off, like I said, we don't have time constraints, so um, I also want to be respectful of everybody's time. So if there's, are there any other comments or questions with regard to either of the topics? Anybody would like to share?
Mike, just thanks for uh, this forum. This is the, um, it's the most powerful state association I've ever seen. You guys do really, really good work and allowing the voices to be heard equally uh, is, is terrific. So thank you, thank you for this. I appreciate it, I respect everybody's comments and it was nice to be able to express our.
Thank you. And so before we, um, if there are no other comments, just before we get off, um, since we have so many folks on, I've offered this in other, some of the other um, town halls as well. If anybody has any questions or comments as it relates to anything that's been going on with COVID, uh, I know that, you know, especially downstate, you guys have had some of the clusters um, in some of your areas that you've had to deal with. You know, I just want you to all know, we're following this daily. Um, we are working uh, with the governor's office, as Bill mentioned, still with the bureau. We're working on all of those things. Um, we are still waiting for some type of guidelines or direction as it relates to that emergency regulation on COVID and flu testing um, that we know came out. So I would just let you all know, this is a large group. As of today, we have had heard nothing. We were on a call with the bureau, um, the Department of Health, attorneys and the Wadsworth Lab folks um, when this first broke to try to get direction before flu season hit. Uh, but again, as I said, we have not heard from anybody. What we, um, I worked with the bureau to come up with kind of joint unofficial guidance right now, but this is what we're both telling everyone to do. Um, so let me go back to what the emergency reg says. The emergency regulation says that if you, in the first, are you, if you as a funeral director are directed by the primary or attending physician at the time of death, if, in the first 48 hours from that physician or said, we suspect COVID, there has not been a test performed prior to death, we think you should, we need you to test to determine if it was COVID or the flu. That would be the trigger for you to have to go ahead and, and perform the test. Okay, so number one, we are, we, at this point, we are completely unaware of any doctors who even know that that exists. So we don't anticipate a lot of, of direction coming to you as it relates to that. Number two, if the death happened in a hospital, a long-term care facility, nursing home, anything along those lines, the regulations require those entities to do the test, not you. If they don't do the test, they have to go to the state department of health, not you. So you don't have responsibility in those circumstances. The only time you might have responsibility, again, if the doctor says something, is on an unattended home death. What we've told to the powers that be is that you also have the coroners and medical examiners who are going to be involved in an unattended home death, and they are a smaller group that, of individuals, and they should be ones who are also um, asked to do the testing. They are part of the emergency regulation as well. So the, the Wadsworth Lab guys were going back, circling back with the coroners and medical examiners to see if they could have them be that first line of defense, so to speak, in an unattended home death where the circumstance arises and testing is required. Again, we haven't heard back from them at this point. So again, you have a very small window in which are circumstances in which you even possibly have to test. Let's assume a circumstance does arise where you are uh, in a situation where a test is being requested. For now, our recommendation is go to either or both the local department of health and/or your uh, medical examiner, coroner and say, I've been advised, I have to do this. Do you have tests? What is the process I'm supposed to follow? Because the local health departments are supposed to be keyed into this. I have been told by um, somebody, I can't remember which area of the state it was in, that the local health department in that area has just received um, test kits. So one county at least, I believe maybe two in a certain area have received test kits. They didn't even know it was coming. So they're not even sure what they have them for. So again, um, practically speaking, we don't anticipate you're going to be asked to perform the test. If a circumstance arises that you are asked and it's your responsibility, again, doctor within 48 hours, unattended home death, our recommendation is go back to your local county or your local health department or your count, um, memmy or coroner and ask for them to help. If they can't, then you have no further responsibility. You've taken reasonable steps, document that as best you can and move forward. Um, so hopefully, we're, we're pushing both us and the bureau for some real guidelines. Um, but until that time, we want to do everything we can to make sure you're protected and that we're limiting any liability or even responsibility you guys have as it relates to this. So uh, just because I know that that's something that we've been asked a lot about, I wanted to make sure I, since I have a large group of funeral directors on this call, I wanted to make sure that I address that. So if there are any questions about that, or again, anything else COVID before we um, depart, please um, feel free to ask.
Mike, I just want to take this opportunity, this is Sherry. Um, one of the things that we've been talking about um, um, at the state association, also at our local association, the metropolitan, is um, we're trying to get new blood in, anyone who's interested. I want to take this opportunity because we have such a large group and a lot of us here um, have a lot of people under us. Um, if you could just reach out to the people under you and say to them, you know, are you interested in any type of um, you know, do you want to hear, get your voice heard? Do you have any opinions on our industry? The best thing to do is to join our, either our local or state association. Um, uh, all of our officers are here, you know, for the metropolitan. I'm, I'm happy to talk to whomever. Bill's happy to talk to whomever. Lucy is, you know, soon to be an officer. All of us are willing to um, talk to whomever is interested in um, being a part of an association, getting their voice heard, having an opinion. So I just, if you guys could just please, because years ago when I started and um, those who were um, above me helped me and pulled me up. And now I'm part of, you know, I'm an officer of my local association and now I'm part of the board um, at the state. It's a wonderful, um, you know, just, just a wonderful thing to do. Um, I'm just asking all of you guys to just reach out to those who you think look promising, who are interested, um, and just to reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in being a part of their local association or the state association. Just taking advantage of that.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, so I don't see any more hands raised or any, anybody in the chat box. So before we hang up, um, just one thing to, to let you know. Again, if you have another, if you have a question or a comment, um, something that you think about later or you just didn't want to bring up in the group setting but want to make sure that we're aware of, please email me, um, so I can incorporate that into the feedback we give to the full board. My email address is pretty easy to remember or easy to do. It's uh, mike@nysFDA.org. Again, mike@nysFDA.org. So please feel free to email me any additional comments or feedback. Uh, on behalf of myself and the association, I want to thank you all for attending this morning and for being so willing to participate and, and offer your feedback and opinions. It's been really valuable. Um, but before we hang up, I would like to turn it back over to our president, uh, Bill, so that he can provide some closing remarks. So Bill, please.
Mike, thank you very much. And once again, thank you to everybody for attending uh, this, uh, this regional town hall. Uh, as, uh, as many of us said, this was the greatest turnout that we've had. And uh, all of your, your, uh, your thoughts, um, your positions are, um, are, are well-received. And we look forward to reporting back to everybody uh, about our next steps. And uh, until then, I kindly ask that everybody please uh, remain safe. Uh, keep your, your funeral home uh, employees safe, uh, your communities, yourself, your families. And of course, always know that the New York State Funeral Directors Association is a trusted resource for you and that the executive board and Mike is always available to you and your team. So thank you very much and I wish everybody a great day.
Have a great day, everybody.